The Governor of the State of LNA has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the August 4, 2022 village board meeting and committee of the whole meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the August 4, 2022 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Chowdhury Mark Hooker, village of president of village of Glendale Heights, dated August 4, 2022. I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, August 4, 2022 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Hooker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to B petitions and communications. Number one, community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy will be held on Wednesdays from September 7th through November 16th and features a realistic view of police work taught by Glendale Heights Police Officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at (630) One thing I want to add, the citizens' police academy meets once a week for 10 weeks. The village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Sunday, September 11th with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 PM on the front steps of the village hall. Please join the village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those we lost on September 11th, 2001. For more information, please call the Public Relations Division at (630) 909-5350. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui, please.
The village of Glendale Heights and the village board relies on community to let us know if you see something of concern. When submitting a concern in writing to any of our departments or your district trustee, we do ask that you please include your name along with phone number and email address. This will help us ask additional questions for clarification and gives us the chance to follow up with you. Additionally, the village website has a new report, a concern tool, for you to submit your concern or browse any frequently asked questions. If you have any questions about how to report a concern, contacting your district trustee or any other forms of communication, please contact the Public Relations Division at (630) 909-5350.
Thank you. Trustee Light, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the 39th Annual Show and Shine Car Show Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 18th from 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display along with a swap meet, food, music, and more. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glendaleheights.org/carshow to download a registration form. Glendale Heights Police Department is partnering with ICNA, relief to collect supplies to support your local students, teachers, and schools. You can help children in school by giving them tools they need to succeed. All school supply items can be dropped off in the collection box in the lobby of the police department. For more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
School will be back in session soon, and it is very important to obey speed limits, especially in school zones, and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around parked cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else children might be present. Students should try and keep a regular route to and from school and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. For more information, please contact the police department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Thank you. The next coffee and chat with the village president and the board will be this Saturday, August 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 AM till noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. The village of Glendale Heights is hiring for a number of full-time and part-time positions. Flowing application today to join a great, hard-working team in a variety of positions. For more information on the job opportunities or for additional career postings, please visit www.glendaleheights.org/hr or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak, please.
Come on out to Camera Park September 15th through the 25th for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Schnitzel Platts and the village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which will include a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glendaleheights Oktoberfest.com or call (323) 577-3893. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center's last day of the season is Monday, October 5th. Postseason pool hours will begin August 13th, when the pool will be open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 6:00 PM. Stop by and cool off in the pool and soak up the sun. For more information, call Glendale Heights 2O and the postseason hours. Contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And I want to thank you to my resident who made our summer fest, five-day event, happy, enjoyable, and full of enjoyment. Thank you, my resident. We provided the best so far, safety, and all those resources we had, you know. So again, thank you for coming and make that event successful, you know. And next, I would like to call on Chief Pappas to introduce Benjamin, our new comfort dog here at the village. Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, village board. The Glendale Heights Police Department has a new member to our team, and that new member is going to be Benjamin. So Benjamin is brought to us by the Lutheran Church Charities, and they have a comfort dog program. So while I'm talking, Katie Penocost is going to be walking Benjamin around so you guys can all meet him. Benjamin's going to be providing some ongoing support with visitations to our schools, our parks, senior center, the Sports Hub, the hospital, Advent Hospital, and other community events. Benjamin also is going to be responding to crisis situations to comfort victims and their families. This is going to include going with our chaplains, our NetFist social workers assisting them in the sessions that they have, assisting our crisis intervention teams, and our peer support teams. There are reasons that we have the, it's called the LCC, Comfort Dogs, and why they are the best. The reason that they're the best comfort dogs that you guys will see, and you guys can look this up, for the first year and a half of Benjamin's life, he is training. So he is not released until he has 2,000 hours of training. The Comfort Dogs, or LCC Comfort Dogs, are all across the country. So what I mean by that is they have been recognized by national televised things. They've been on CNN, these Comfort Dogs, People Magazine, The Ellen Show, WGN, and Good Morning America. That's how good these dogs are. They were requested and went down to Uvalde, Texas. They went to the Surfside, Florida building collapse. They went to the wildfires in California, the Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, and most recently Highland Park. Unlike Arcani Lobo, Benjamin has six handlers, Deputy Chief Kelly Derry, investigative aide Wendy Toigo, retired officer Michelle Cahill, our accreditation manager Katie Penocost, and our two NetFist social workers, Yvette Nyami. Benjamin has his own Facebook page, he has his own trading cards, and he has two different style vests that he will wear. Benjamin just turned four, and he's trained to be very docile and calm, like he is right now. When we take off Benjamin's vest and he's not working, he acts like a crazy puppy. We call him Wiggle Butt because he just wiggles all over the place. But when he is working, he's working. He's supposed to be calm, and he's supposed to be there for people when they're in special We have received requests on Facebook for donations for Benjamin. Unfortunately, we cannot take treats for him because he's on a very strict diet. I know David posted on Facebook toys. If somebody wants to donate toys, they're on Facebook for him. We are very grateful with our collaboration with the LCC for Benjamin. We are the very first police department to ever receive an LCC comfort dog. We are the pilot program for that. We know that Benjamin is going to be a huge and great addition to our police department, the village, and all of our residents. Does anybody have any questions?
Does Benjamin know he or she is that important, you know?
A rock star? Yeah. Yeah, nationally and out, he was a huge hit. People went from getting the balloons tied by the magician over by Benjamin's. Yeah, yeah.
Good, thanks.
It's nice. He's got a great Facebook page, so visit that, too. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public who wants to discuss public agenda items? Yes.
Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue. Maybe you'll address them earlier because they are agenda items, but I have two questions. One is, why are you replacing the big electric sign on Fullerton? And the other one is, it says that you're redistricting the six districts, but no map is included. Do you have a redistricting map that we can see?
It'll be in the presentation.
It'll be in the presentation, okay.
And the sign is burning out.
Really? It's not that old.
Old enough.
14 years old.
No kidding. And then lastly, it says, Camera Park Usage Agreement to Follow. Do you have a packet for us or no?
There's a packet that the elected officials have.
It's going to be in the presentation?
I can give you mine when I'm done.
All right, thank you. That's all of my, that's my questions, thanks.
Anybody else? You have the concerned agenda before you. Would Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the concerned agenda?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2022. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2022. Three, approval of the special board meeting minutes of July 7th, 2022. Four, ratification of the accounts payable listing of July 7th, 2022 in the amount of Five, ratification of the accounts payable listing of July 21st, 2022 in the amount of $2,397,328.69. Six, approval of the accounts payable listing of August 4th, 2022 in the amount of $1,287,474.48. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of DuPage, the village of Glendale Heights for the James Court and Pearl Avenue Drainage Improvements Project. Eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase of police uniforms. Nine, resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a replacement electronic message center sign to be located at the southeast corner of Bloomingdale Road and Fullerton Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights. Ten, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the contract between Homer Tree Care and the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number one for the 2022 street program in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase and installation of two carrier rooftop HVAC units at the village of Glendale Heights Civic Center Building. Thirteen, resolution to authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Agreement for Professional Engineering Services for the wastewater treatment plant, phosphorus removal upgrades project. Fourteen, resolution to authorize the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services for the water supply facilities rehabilitation project. Fifteen, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of Phase II professional design and engineering services for the West Fullerton Avenue Service Transportation Program Street Reservicing Project. Sixteen, motion to approve pay request number 10 to V3 Construction Group Limited for the East Branch Tributary Number Two Channel Maintenance Project in total amount not to exceed $19,246.50. Seventeen, motion to approve pay request number three to J. Condon Sewer Service Incorporated for the CDBG Glen Hill Water Main Replacement Project Phase II in total amount not to exceed Eighteen, motion to approve pay request number 14, the Klaus Brothers Incorporated for the Camera Park Improvement Project, total amount not to exceed $141,546.74. Nineteen is approval of consent items.
Mr. Flint, you want to remove seven?
You need to get a motion to approve the consent?
Is there a motion to remove number seven?
No, no. You need to get a motion to approve the consent agenda, Mayor.
Yep.
I think the mayor's asking if item seven can be removed.
Remove.
Before the...
That's under New Business.
Under New Business.
That's under New Business.
It's under New Business, number seven.
So he needs to get approval of the consent agenda?
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the considered agenda? I need motion, Pat, Trustee Pat, and Trustee Schmidt. Discussion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Pojak.
Doug, on the pay request for Klaus Brothers Camera Park, is that the final payment?
We still have about 5% left that we're holding.
Okay, that's not much then. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The concerned agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business?
So Mayor, under New Business, I would ask that number seven be removed, Camera Park Usage Agreements, and we're going to add that to committee of the whole when we talk about the Camera Park events happening next week.
Is there a motion to remove number seven from New Business? I need motion for that. Trustee Pat?
Motion to remove number seven.
Trustee Light?
Second on that.
Second. A discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to remove number seven is approved. Number one, New Business, number one, an ordinance to amend section 11-2-3 entitled "Definition of Chapter 2 Entitled Rules and Definitions" and section 11-4-9 entitled "Home Occupations of Chapter 4 Entitled General Zoning Regulations" and section 11-11 dot A dot 2 entitled "Permitted Uses of Article A" entitled O-1 Local Office District of Chapter 11 entitled "Office, Business, Park, and Industrial District" and section 11-11 dot B dot 3 entitled "Conditionally Uses of Article D" entitled I- Light Industrial District of Chapter 11 entitled "Office, Business, Park, and Industrial District." All contained in title 11 entitled "Zoning Regulations of the Municipal Court of Ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights from June 23rd, 2022, COW." This is first reading. Number two, an ordinance re-dividing the village into six election districts for the purpose of electing village trustees. This is first reading.
Mayor, if I could, if we can get a map, the map up there. So just for some explanation to the public and to other elected officials. I know it's hard to see, but every 10 years, when the census comes out, because of the type of government that we have, which is a trustee village former government, each one of our trustee districts, all six of them, have to have equal-ish population. So from the 2010 census to the 2020 census, our population, we actually lost about 1,300 residents, but a population between districts was also out of whack. So to repopulate those districts, our planner and our attorney's office got together and figured out where we were heavy and where we were short. And district, I can't read it. Trustee Mohammed Siddiqui's district was about 1,000 more residents than Trustee Maritato's district. And to regulate that and to make that more comparable, because the districts have to conjoin and have to be next to each other, we can't gerrymander districts out. So the west side of President Street, from Fullerton Avenue to North Avenue, the houses along the golf course, the apartment complex, are now going to be assigned to Trustee Maritato's district. The Trustee Light's district was heavy, a few hundred relative to Trustee Schmidt's district. Trustee Light is losing a few hundred residents that essentially goes from Fullerton Avenue and Highland, the east side of Highland, to Glen Allen Road, which includes Larry Lane, and then down to Winthrop. And you can see the black line kind of delegates where that is. So the west side of Highland Avenue is still in Trustee Light's district. The east side from Fullerton to Winthrop is going to move to Trustee Schmidt's district, down to Winthrop Avenue to Glen Allen Road. So we had to do this, we had to do it every 10 years when census comes out, to redistrict to make sure the population within each district is equal so that everybody in those districts has equal voting rights, and the residents in that district are duly represented by the, correct, by the right representative. So is there any questions on that? Trustee Pojak?
Yeah, Doug, will the residents be notified who the new...
Yeah, so we have sent this information to the elections board, and it'll be reflective when elections come out in November and April, the new district that they belong to will be reflective of their mailings.
Will we get maps?
You have them.
They will be...
It's in the packet, but I'll get you a hard copy.
Oh, I didn't get a packet.
And we have our engineering firm actually making up big maps that are, that will replace the old 10-year-old maps that we have.
Good.
So we'll get everybody maps.
It's complete, they completed it, so we'll get it.
Okay.
So we're going to notify these people, or we're going to wait for the, we're going to wait for the county?
Well, we could send out a notification to the affected parties on those streets, if that's what the board wants us to do. We have no issue doing that.
Well, I mean, I'm gaining 700 people.
Right. We have no issue putting together a little piece of literature and having delivered to those houses, explaining to them the process of how the redistricting took place and what district they're moving to.
Because I, because I don't even think those people vote at the fire station, because my district votes at the fire station.
Well, they probably voted the golf course.
So they probably voted the golf course.
Right. So Joanne and her planner can work on the addresses that are affected, and they can draft a document, and we'll get those out to the affected people.
Okay, good, thanks, Doug.
Anybody else?
Any question? More question, no? Thank you, Mr. Flint. Number three, an ordinance to amend section 3-2-H-5 entitled "Collection of Texts Through Revenue Stamps" and section 3-2-H-6 entitled "Declaration of Transfer of Article H" entitled "Real Estate Transfer Texts of Chapter 2" entitled "Village Texts of, Access of the Municipal Court of Ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights." This is first reading. Number four, a resolution rejecting, rejecting all bids for sludge hauling and disposal services, RES 2022-R-76. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-R-76? I need motion for that. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Our Trustee Pat Maritato. Discussion.
Is there a reason why we rejected the bid?
Because it came in quite high.
Came in too high?
High, yeah. So we've...
Is that the same company we've been using?
We've been using them for about 18 years, as far as I can track it, and the last bid that came in, we, we sent it out to bid twice, in June and July, and in both times, they were the only bidder, and they were very high.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2022... The motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash R dash 76 is approved. Number five, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the first amendment to the contract between Say Nigra, Nigra Central LLC and the village of Kalender Heights LNI, RES 2022 dash R dash 77. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash R dash 77? Uh trustee Pojek.
Motion.
Trustee Light.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, nothing, I.
Okay. So. No question, okay. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash R dash 77 is approved. Number six, a resolution to approve and authorize the ex- execution of the me- membership agreement for a geographic information system consortium and to approve and authorize the execution of a GIS consortium service provider contract, RES 2022 dash R dash 78. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash R dash 78? Uh trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Pojek.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, uh trustee Schmidt.
Uh Joanne, what is going to happen in the interim between now and the end of the year as far as our access to the GIS services?
Actually, I'll defer to, who should we defer to?
I can answer that. Uh, nothing. So the current vendor that we use will maintain our current relationship with until the information is transposed into our new vendor. And the new vendor will be on site here soon, uh once this is passed to start the uh transition to our new vendor.
Trustee Light.
Doug, will, will we be adding any more layers or any more information to the GIS system? I know it was talked about in the past.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Um, the GIS consortium is a group of about 50 municipalities and they've been growing for the last 15 years. And they have gotten access to a lot of different layers that we currently don't have access to. So it would probably include trees, the city trees, and lots of different um layers that we would be adding that we don't have right now. And old areas, for example, from the county would be available to us.
Awesome. Cause I was excited when it came on.
The other part of that is, uh and probably the biggest sell for us was that we have a person on site several hours a week doing that transition and doing the data entry and helping us really get the process started to up, really upgrade our GIS and, and get it to where it should be.
Awesome. That's exciting then. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash R dash 78 is approved. We now go on a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? Yes. Mr. Po.
Sorry, hopefully it's an easy one, it's for Rachel.
Okay.
Uh Rachel, on that sludge, um is that gonna, by rejecting, is that gonna put any? I mean, it's not gonna put any burden on, you know, I live right there, so. I don't want it like backing up.
Oh, no, no. Um, the um immediate act, the immediate um item on the agenda after that rejection was an extension of the existing contract for three months. So it will continue service.
Oh, perfect. I'm sitting there thinking, man, what are they gonna do with it?
No, no, it, it's got to go, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker, uh after number six, number seven was camera park usage agreements to follow what happened.
We removed that.
He just removed it.
Moved it to cow.
Yeah, just tonight.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No problem. Executive session pending litigation. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Hi, Cheryl from Fullerton. Could you explain uh new business number three more? Because reading it and the way you read it, to me, translate to raising your taxes. So could you explain the ordinance?
Be happy to explain for the board, Mayor, what the changes to the transfer tax, here I am. We're making two changes to the transfer stamp ordinance. The one relates to something that's been around even before my time, the denomination of transfer stamps themselves. The ordinance calls for them to be issued in various denominations. We don't do that anymore. We just issue one stamp for the selling price of the house. And the second change relates to the document itself. We're removing the requirement for the, for the seller and remain the requirement for the buyer. We're not changing the formula for the stamp and we're not changing the exemption provisions.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have one. On the transfer stamps, uh would the prices stay the same? They can be reduced or what?
Price stays the same. Trustee Pojek stays the same. $3 per thousand.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Executive session pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to open meeting act, five ILCS 120 oblique to C 11. Is there a motion to suspend the village board meeting and go to, no, it's not that. We are going for.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole. Our committee of the whole meeting, I need motion for that. Trustee Schmidt.
I move that we suspend the village board meeting and move to the committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Second, trustee Light. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
The effect of that motion is to recess this meeting. Uh it's not an adjournment, so you will be returning.
Yeah, we are returning. So. Okay. The committee of the whole meeting. This mo- meeting is adjourned.
No, it's recessed.
Recessed.
Uh trustee Schmidt, um trustee Schroder, I think, has COW.
Yes.
Uh trustee Schroder.
I have the committee of the whole.
I will gladly hand.
What's wrong, Bill? You don't wanna do it?
I say let trustee do it.
I can vote.
Mayor, you're the chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's the chair.
Okay.
All right, can we? All right, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, August the 4th, 2020, 20, 22, to order. Will the clerk please note to his present?
Noted.
All right. Does anyone have any additions or delete? Oh my. Mohammed, are we gonna start, all right, we'll start with Bill. All right, what do you got, Bill?
Okay, uh national night out and the community garden status.
Yes, Mohammed.
Western Avenue.
What?
Western Avenue.
All right. Mike, did you have something to?
I did, uh collection of school supplies.
Pat, don't you have something?
Fest.
Oh.
I ha- I, I have three more, but by the time these guys get done.
Fest is already on the discussion regarding.
I think we have Fest on here, but that's.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay.
Do you wanna do it or not?
No, I'll take a pass.
Take it back, all right.
Reviews.
All right, very good. All right, we're gonna start with this.
Do you need to add item seven?
Uh, we'll start with the discussion regarding.
You need to add item seven from the regular board meeting under new business that was deferred to the COW, so somebody wants to ask, somebody on the board wants to ask that that item be added?
It's the uh park usage agreement.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, uh yeah, we'll add the camera park usage agreement also. Thank you.
You have another one, too? Okay.
Where's the last one, Mr. Schmidt?
All right. Is that it? Is every?
This is agreement. That was item seven under new business.
Okay, may we continue? All right. All right, first, we're gonna do the uh complaint tracking software. And this is Comcast and Doug will help us on this.
So it's Comcast. Last year, uh I don't know exactly remember when, the board asked us to look into complaint tracking software for uh residents. Currently, as complaints come in, we kinda handle it by email and it's not really efficient and we have a hard time kinda keeping track of some of the uh complaints as they come in. So we've been researching uh companies with software that handle complaint tracking. We came across Comcast. We had meetings with Comcast and Paige from Comcast is here. Paige was out here yesterday, uh flew in from North Carolina, provided training to uh most of the, 30-some users that are gonna be users within the village. All day yesterday, she flew back and now she's here to give a short presentation to the board and to the residents on what the software's gonna do and how it's gonna help us create some efficiencies and oversight and accountability when it comes to the complaints that are coming into the village. Also allow us, when complaints come into the mayor's office or community development window or other places, not through tickets and work orders, to allow us to put that into our Comcast system and then into the work order system so that uh there's trackability and there's accountability to making sure that the complaints get handled and that they're done and there's follow-up. So Paige?
Yeah, definitely. So what I'm gonna show you is the citizen portal, so this is what you're currently looking at. And then I'll show you briefly the internal portal, so what your jurisdictional users will be using. So as a citizen, I have the ability to look at your FAQs or frequently, excuse me, frequently asked questions. I can also search by keyword, so if I wanted to search for weeds, I would be able to search by category as well. You can also click into these little FAQs and see all of the information here. If this is not what you were looking for, you have the ability to submit a request. So you'll click that submit request button. I didn't find what I was looking for, for my weed question. So what I'm going to do is put in an issue.
Yes. Anything else?
So I'm gonna run through this quick just so citizens can see it. And then um we'll open it up to questions if that works for you. So citizens will put in their issue description. They have the ability to drag and drop and browse for files. Once they click next, you'll see pre-populated categories based on your issue descriptions. So the issue I have is for weeds. My category is weeds. I'm gonna click next and add my location. So I have my location. I'm gonna click next. And this is how I will be notified of updates on my submission. So it's important, if you want to be updated, that you put in your name and your email address. And then you'll submit that. So as a citizen, I will also get an email that says my issue has been uh submitted successfully. Any questions for you guys?
Trustee, uh Mike.
Paige, I have a quick question for you. Will this generate a report that I could obtain on a monthly basis?
Yes, it will.
So that'll be great, cause it's kinda nice to know.
Yeah, so we have the ability to do all of these reports in here and your internal team can download these and send them to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Of course.
Mohammed, it's your turn.
Yep, um so once you submit, what happened next? Is it goes to that concerning department or, or like, what happened?
So now that my submission has been submitted, I'm in the internal portal. So this is what your jurisdictional users will use on a daily basis. Here is my submission. You can see that I'm the customer. I have my email address in here and this email was automatically sent out to me. Next steps will depend on your category and the business practices based on that category.
So who was that, the weeds thing, Paige? Who was that for? Cause it's hard to see the screen here.
Yeah.
Who was, who was, who was that forwarded to?
Yeah, so we have default signings based on your category. So for this specific category, it would automatically be assigned to Jennifer. Jennifer would get an email saying that there's a new submission assigned to her. And Tom will also be CC'd on that email because he's a collaborator.
So this, so because it's a weed con- community development issue, that auto, that automatically went to Jennifer Hopwood and to Tom Byalis?
Okay, and let's say, so do you have any timeframe, let, if, if they do not see that or they do not acknowledge that, is that gonna trigger any alert to the, either to the customer or?
So it will be internal. There's an SLA of three days.
Okay.
And past those three days, there's an ex- or escalation. So whoever needs to be notified will be notified on the fifth day.
Okay, and is there a way for a resident to keep a track, like, so they are aware of at least, you know, this ticket has been acknowledged by the department? So, you know, because once they submit it, let's say we have an internal SLA for, for three days or five days or, but maybe they think that, oh, you know what, the city forget about me. So how we are going to keep them updated?
Yes, so you have the ability to email back and forth within this submission. And citizens can also click this view your submission, enter in their email address. They would then get this, that you'll get a link. They'll open up their email and see that link. And I can show that to you if you would like.
Cause they get an auto respond when they submit it? That?
Yes, they do.
And they get a case number?
They get, okay, uh but I mean, is there a, like, a progress report or progress that where their ticket is, is that, like, you know, they will be notified? Or, or let's say they put their ticket number, can they see that it's in progress or it's been resolved? Or it's, it's pending, something like that?
Yes, so this is what the citizen is going to see. We have, the status here is open. And your users can email the citizen whenever they need to email. So if it's based on your business practices to keep the citizen up to date, you have the ability to do that. The citizen can also reply to those emails.
But y- your system does not send them uh any alert after it's been acknowledged or, or anything? It's once this, once it's submitted.
The first email, yes.
But that's it. So let's say I submit my, my complaint, I received an acknowledgement email and, and I haven't heard anything from the city. If I go to this portal and I put my email address, is there a way I can track down where my ticket is?
Yes, so you put your email in, you get this email that gives you a link.
Okay.
And then you open that link and you go to this page. So this is all of the submissions that are assigned to me as a citizen or that I've submitted as a citizen. I can then open up each submission and see all of the details of my submission. I can reply to emails here. I can reply to emails here. I can ask questions. But every communication will stay on this specific submission. So, you'll have a full history of the full conversation.
Okay. So, the person, let's say if it's addressing to the department, whatever the resolution, they find out they're going to be able to put that in and they can add the attachments, you know?
Yep.
They can do that. Okay.
Yes. And there is an automatic email when you close this out. So, if I close out my submission, I have this automatic email that goes to the citizen.
Yeah. And do the citizen have any attachments which they can attach? Let's, do you, your page allow that?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, when you're in here, there's a whole section under the issue description that allows for attachments.
And how much space, I mean, what is the limitation for the attachment in your page?
So, there is a size limit, but not a number of attachments.
What's, what's the size limit?
I believe that it is fifteen. It's here. So, we have our size limit here for each file and then our accepted file types down here. You will get an error if you put something in here that we don't accept. There will be an error. So, you'll know why it's not working.
Okay. So, because, you know, as we move forward, it's gonna grow. What's your policy about archiving this? Where are you gonna store it and is, is that gonna be, yeah?
Yep. So, we live on the A W S server. Your data will live with you for the life of your agreement with us. After that, we provide a courtesy data dump if you choose to do that. And then that data is yours. This is your data. We do not keep any of it. It's yours to keep.
And we, you do not sell any of this data? The customer is not gonna, okay.
No.
All right. That's all questions I have. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Pat, I think you were next. Oh, Chester?
I have a question for Doug. Doug, what is this gonna cost? This service gonna cost the village? I know it's not free.
No, it's ten thousand dollars a year. It's already been budgeted for.
Ten thousand a year? Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt.
Two questions. One, are we going to go back and retrofit or enter in to the system existing complaints? And two, when are we going online with this?
So, it's, it went online yesterday afternoon after our training.
Okay.
And that's why we're talking about it tonight.
Okay.
And then going back in time, I have, there's one complaint that came into the mayor's office that actually was six complaints. We're gonna add that into the Comcast with the resident that came in with essentially community development ordinance type complaints. We'll enter those in because she had pictures that we can scan in to keep a case file on. But going back in time, we're just gonna move forward.
Okay.
Pat.
Doug, like, okay, let's, Comcast, I deal with John, code enforcer. So, now I email him if I have a complaint. Now, he's on the road. So, now if I email him back, he's not getting that. He's not getting that email till he returns back to the office.
Well, he's got a phone.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if we're using this system.
No, no. So, two separate systems, right? So, this, this doesn't replace the internal ticketing system for public works or for community development. They still have their internal ticketing system. This is for us when we have resident complaints who go to the website and enter information in. This is for phone call complaints that come into any number of, of people from the mayor's office to the police department, to community development, to administration. That there's a central location that all this information goes to and all these verbal complaints and all the email complaints that we get. Right now, we don't have a way of hosting that. We don't have a good way of following up on any of that because it goes to honestly anybody in the village. Now, we have a central location where these complaints will go to so that when a complaint comes in about weeds and it comes into, to say the mayor's office, comes into about weeds, Mayor Secretary Jazz will enter it into Comcast. It'll get forwarded right to, to community development. Community development will cut and paste that complaint into their work order system because that's where, that's what communicates with everything else in Comcast. And they're gonna have to go in there. They'll assign that to an inspector. The inspector go out there and close it out. They'll go back into Comcast, close it out, and that'll be it.
Okay, but here, here's my thing. A resident calls, calls in a complaint. I don't know about it. Now.
You will.
Well, now they call me, or you call me and let me know, let me know what kind of complaint it is. But with this system here, somebody can call in and I won't even know that there was a complaint in my district.
No, I think just the opposite.
When you get the monthly report, you'll get the report.
And I think, and I, and I think that with this communication process, right? That when one of us as a department head sees it and one of the elected officials doesn't know about it, that we're gonna communicate to you if it's serious enough that you should know about it. Because we're, right now, if something comes in and gets emailed, not everybody's always included on the emails. And not everybody knows everything. And when we have a central location repository for all the complaints come in, everybody, there's thirty-some users will know that that complaint is there.
That's why I asked for a report, if they generate a report.
Yeah, but you will get the report to.
But if you, if you call, if you call me up because a resident complains to you and you go, hey, Doug, there's whatever the issue is, I'm gonna go into Comcast, put that complaint into Comcast. It's gonna get directed to the right department that it needs to go to. And then we'll have instant follow-up on it and feedback.
Or you can add Pat's email in that.
Right, right.
Have him test the.
My email, I don't care. I take care of everybody.
Right. Trustee Paul Jack would like to.
Pat, Doug, I have a question. To me, it's very important. So, Siddiqui gets a complaint, a resident complaining to Siddiqui. Now, that resident is part of Pat's now. This is where these residents have to be notified A S A P.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
A S A P, that's what I'm saying.
They're gonna work on it.
I'll take care of that. All right.
Make sure that those notices don't, make sure those notices don't go out until the ordinance adopt the, the district changes is approved.
Another board meeting.
Yes. So, you're gonna have to wait until your next board meeting, then those notices can go out. But they can be all pre-drafted and ready to go.
Oh, I want to add, you know, a few things, you know? Number one, when complaint, complaint is filed, our mayor's office will be in motion, number one. It will take care, as usual, we do, you know? Number two, those people who are, are calling, you know, on phone or they send me email, we will take care of that too, you know? Number three is good thing that we are sharing now, you know, these complaint with elected official as well as with the village employees.
All right, thank you. Maria, are we voting on this?
No, this is a, this was just a, a notification and a discussion about the new software that's live. It's, it's already been budgeted for. It's already in place. It's already operational. And it went live like four o'clock yesterday afternoon. So, I thought it was a perfect opportunity to.
Do they have any app for the smartphones?
Is there an app?
There is not an app, but the portal is web optimized.
Okay. Are you guys working on the, for any app, like to be added in the future or?
So, we did a lot of research and found that citizens don't want to download an app. So, we have decided as a business not to go down that road. We do, however, keep up with all of the changes for phones and other tablets and devices. So, we're keeping that up to date to make sure that we are web optimized on a mobile device.
And what kind of security you have for keeping the data safe?
So, that's a good question. I can find some additional research and send it to Doug and have him provide that to you.
Thank you.
And how many village or cities you have so far contacted?
Yeah. So, we have two products and across both products, we have about two hundred cities and jurisdictions.
Good. Thanks.
All right. Is that all? Any, anyone else want to comment? All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paige.
Okay. Doug, this is yours again. Electric vehicle charging stations.
So, this is for me, kind of to get the temperature of the board. And if it's something that you want us to pursue when it comes to electrical vehicle charging stations here at the city complex. I was contacted by Carbon Solutions Group from Chicago. And they do electrical vehicle charging stations. They do it at no cost to the village. And they, now I'll just read you what the, what they sent. And I put this in your, in board docs. And it's there for you to read if you want to read it. I put it in yesterday. Carbon Solutions Group is a company that does electrical vehicle charging station along with a couple of different other things. But they seek funding, grant funding to do the installations of the vehicle charging stations. They monitor potential source of funding for proposed location, implement additional charging stations at the village's request. They're responsible for all costs associated with the project design, permitting, equipment installation. They pay the operating costs for the agreement, including maintenance of charging units and all utility costs. And there's a small revenue share with the village. So, the proposal here is for four vehicle charging stations to go in the west parking lot where most of our is. We have traffic court participants there. We have a lot of training going on there. It's actually a really good place to have vehicle charging stations. Not to mention, at some point in the not-too-distant future, I see our fleet turning to electric vehicles. I just do. Maybe not the police fleet, but certainly community development vehicles, other low-impact vehicles. I really see us not only being forced to go that way, but that's just a wave of the future. So, getting ahead of the game and having vehicle charging stations in place that we didn't pay for the installation of, I think is a, a good idea. But I wanted, before I made any commitment to anything, I wanted to get the temperature of the board, if that's something you wanted, you think we should pursue with this company. So, that's kind of what it's, this, this is about.
Chester.
Yeah, go for it. I've had a lot of residents ask me, they either have to go to Caputo's or Meyer's. Then they gotta sit there, do their shopping and spend more money.
That's the whole point.
Okay, Mike. Mike, you were next.
Well, I like the idea. I think it'd be a great idea. I've had quite a few residents switching to electric cars. And I see a lot of them even at work, so.
So, I mean, the charging isn't free, right? So, you may have to pay to charge a vehicle.
Yeah, you're paying for it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I'm all for the green, yes, so go for it. Yep.
Trustee Schmidt.
Bill.
What's it gonna cost us to have this installed?
Nothing. They ca, they take care of all the infrastructure. They take care of everything. The, in your packet, the revenue share on our half, on our part, is small, right? They're looking at thirty thousand dollars over twenty years. So, it really isn't much for us, other than we're providing a service for our residents. And we have the ability, if we ever have an electric vehicle fleet, which I really see in the near future us doing, we already have charging stations in place that we would have to work out some agreement on charging them.
Chester.
Doug, I have one more question. At the west end of the parking, do we have enough power to service these stations?
Well, we'd be looking at the parking spots here right off the building.
Oh, it is close.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. That's what they have engineers for and their people can come in and figure it out. And if, assume we have power in the basement that they can hook into and extend.
If they have to break ground, that's their problem.
That's all, the agreement that I have been sent, and of course, I, I haven't done anything with it for a month and a half till I talked to the board about anything.
Right.
Is just what I read. They take care of everything.
Okay.
And certainly, our attorneys would be part and parcel to making sure a contract was in place that covered all of that.
Are we getting some incentive or some share in?
The revenue share is very small.
What percentage? Do you have any?
Well, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars over twenty years, so fifteen hundred bucks a year. I mean, it's, the, the revenue share is nominal.
And village vehicle will be charged free or we have to pay, you know?
Well, if we ever get a, if we ever get an electric vehicle fleet, we would probably have to pay to charge, but we have to pay to charge it anyway, no matter where it's at.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you, Doug.
So, I'll move forward with them next week and start engaging in a conversation.
Yes. Good job.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on anything we spoke?
I have someone on Zoom. I believe it's just Glendale resident five-two-five. She says, in relation to Comcast, as a thirty-four-year-old female, I would love an app if it can stay up to date. And she also says, I believe it's in relation to the vehicle charging stations, the village is all for the green, but wanna chop down fifty-year-old trees and not diseased or causing sewage.
You may step up. Our comments are reduced to five minutes per person.
So, this was on what's happening on Glendale Heights, supposedly on East Lincoln, east side of Bloomingdale Road, you're taking out all the trees.
Doug, would you like to answer then?
Sure. So, the, the trees on Lincoln, the road is gonna be replaced. It's gonna be tore up and replaced. The trees, honestly, should never have been planted there. They're, they have overgrown the parkway and they're eroding the sidewalk and the street. The root systems have grown into the street. They're buckling, they're, they're too big for those parkways. And the trees, in order to remove and replace the roadway, we're gonna have to cut the roots of the trees because they're growing under the roadway. And by cutting the roots of the trees, we are destabilizing the tree, which makes it a potential liability in case of wind, storm and anything else. So, the only real resolution, and nobody likes to take down trees. You know, we're Tree City USA. We win awards every year for our trees. Nobody wants to take down trees. But there really isn't any other resolution to Lincoln Avenue Street that is gonna make it a safe street with all the root structures being cut out from under the roadway. So, the trees are gonna die or they're gonna fall over at some point and be unsafe. So, they have to come out.
Okay. Mike, did you have something?
The trees will be replaced with different type of tree.
So, I asked that question today of our arborist and I don't know what's in the replacement program for the street.
We typically replace any trees we remove with a more smaller tree that's suitable for that right away.
Right. So, there will be replacements put in once the roadway is completed.
That'll be completion of all the, real restoration of all the, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Sam.
Put your name and address, please.
I was about to. My name is Sam Lucenti from President Street. I had a question about the complaint software. Is this just a, is this gonna actually replace all the other mechanisms that we're using right now as citizens to contact about complaints? Like, right now, you mentioned phone calls, emails. Are you gonna be steering residents to go to this?
No, you can, you can contact us any way you want to. And if you send an email to anybody, right, about a complaint of whatever it is, they're gonna enter it into that system so that it's centrally located and that it goes to the right people, right? But we're, right now, we have a complaint tracking system on our, on our homepage of our website. That's just an email that goes to a generic email address. That gets forwarded by an administrative person to the right people. But not everybody gets emailed. Not everybody knows about that complaint. So, now, if, if you called me up with a complaint, I would enter into this system. And then everybody who's on that system would know about it and the people that need to know about it would be notified right away of that complaint. It's not gonna take away from phone calls, not gonna take away from whatever relationships you've built with the. It's not gonna take away from phone calls, it's not gonna take away from whatever relationships you've built with department heads or anybody else in the village, not gonna take away from emails. All this is doing is creating a central location for us to have complaints and to generate reports for elected officials so they can see that we're following up on the complaints made by residents.
So, once a, once a complaint comes in through a, not, not through this complaint software, you're actually gonna, somebody from the village is gonna put it into the system.
Correct.
Right? But the, but the one thing that I think is probably a little bit lacking is that the, the gener, the, the origin of that complaint won't be able to mine the data and see what the status is, right? Because.
The person making the complaint?
Yes.
No, that, no, that was, they, they, on the presentation, if you clicked on, if you made a verbal complaint, you are correct, right?
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
But they're gonna get an email, if they give me their email address, they're gonna get an email for that.
So if they make the complaint and give you the email address, you put that email address into the software.
They would get notified.
And then, then they can use the system to mine the data to find out what the progress is.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna continue.
I have one more comment, excuse me.
One more?
From Glendale resident 525. She states that, "At least let the residents know about the trees being cut down, rather than finding out from someone driving by to measure up the trees to be cut down." And then I also have Youssef Mohammed, who would like to discuss Western Avenue traffic, so I will unmute him for a moment.
Did she want a, a reply from Mohammed?
No, he wanna discuss that, actually.
No?
He wanna discuss that, yeah, so, go ahead, go ahead. Maybe I will just, you know, put mine on also in this.
Okay. All right, may we continue?
One second. No, I'm waiting for Youssef Mohammed to unmute himself and ask his question.
You there, sir? You need to unmute.
Are we waiting for someone to speak?
Yeah.
Just a moment.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. So I believe the trustee Mohammed Siddiqui will, will bring this up, but I wanted to bring up this, this issue on Western Avenue, and it's going both inbound and outbound on West, Western Avenue going toward North Avenue and the other way. The, the street has parking, and especially entering to the west and from North Avenue, the, the curve is, is dangerous. I mean, there's literally no visibility, number one. Number two, people drive recklessly, and then having those cars parked right outside is not helping. So it's, it's literally a, a disaster waiting to happen. And this whole thing started when the village and previous administration provided the leeway to the dealership. So they literally changed the whole layout just to accommodate the dealership, and now we residents are suffering. Number one, getting in and out of Western Avenue from Green Drive is, is a hell. It's dangerous. Traffic coming from all directions, and there's, there's no traffic light, there's not even the lanes define who to make left where or right. So it's, it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen. So what I'm requesting from the village, the minimum, have, have the, have it studied, you know, like professionally, have the whole situation studied by a third-party company and provide the findings, number one, in terms of can we install a traffic light? If not, then what can be the solution from this disaster? At the minimum, the Western Avenue has to be a no-parking zone, absolutely, because I would invite all the trustees and the mayor and anybody who's concerned the, the community development to come down and literally stand there for like 15 minutes, and you will see what the issue is. We have a lot of new drivers, young drivers, who just got their license. And you know, I, I, I personally think that this is, this is a very dangerous situation and really just.
Yeah, if I may add something, since I live in that area, and he's absolutely right. I think the problem starts when we reconstruct the Western Avenue. I believe it was like five or six years ago, or maybe seven years ago. I can answer that question. The Western Avenue was realigned, and it was designed by our village engineer. The, the reason for doing it was to realign it with the road opposite. At the time, we, we did contact IDOT to put a traffic light in, and they denied that request. And we also asked for a lane, a specific lane, to be able to turn into Western Avenue, and they denied that request. And it was all contingent on that piece of land that's next to Western Avenue. That, once that got sold, I think Joanne, you can remember this too. Once that, once that piece of land got sold, and then the type of business that moved in, then IDOT would re, would reconsider it. But at the moment, the way it is, they will not install a light.
They, yeah, they agreed exactly with Public Works Director Kaplan. We were able to have IDOT do some changes to that, right, the left-in from North Avenue into Western Avenue. As when they redid North Avenue, they did make some adjustments based on our engineer's recommendation, but we were exactly right. We were hoping when we realigned it that it would meet the criteria for a traffic signal, and it did not. So we're hoping with redevelopment.
Traffic signal, I think you're misunderstanding. It's basically a traffic, it's not the street lights. That's what he's asking for, because it's very dark over there. And also, there is only two lanes over there. So especially when it's, there is a curve, that's where the blind spot is, and it's only two lanes. So if there is a parking car on the street, there is nothing left, you have to go to the opposite lane, and, and that's where the danger is, because the cars which are coming from the, from the southern side of the Western Avenue, they do not know that you are also, so it's just a matter of time that there might be some really bad accident. And a couple of times, I myself escaped narrowly because the other guy who is coming from there is on blind spot, I, as do, as am I, because the car is there. I cannot move on on my lane because there is a parked car right there, and there is always, and especially at night. If you go and take, I believe, Ms. Kaplan, you went over there with, with your staff and take a look at that at night, correct? Yeah, you asked, you asked Public Works to look at installing streetlights there. And I believe Director Pauline will be talking about that at the budget review meeting, which is scheduled, I believe, for the second week of August, the third week of August. Yeah.
Can I please interrupt? So the streetlight is one thing, the other thing is the, the, the street has to be absolutely no parking zone, because people have driveways and garage, they can park on it. Having the, the cars parked right at the entrance from North Avenue, where the, the blind spot is, that creates a lot of confusion, because traffic going southbound, they think they have a right-of-way, but actually the traffic oncoming to North Avenue, they have the right-of-way. And people just drive crazy, and they, they honk at each, each, each other because they think they have the right-of-way. So this, parking has to go to at least avoid, at the minimum, to avoid this confusion. And if we could possibly add a divider lane, like a yellow lane, just to let people know which lane is what.
Is there a way we can broaden that lane, or is this something IDOT has to do with?
On West, the western?
On western, yeah. Like, you know, especially, especially where the curve is, if we can.
That is a village, it's a, it's, but it would need to be fully redesigned, it'd be obviously a costly issue.
I think it would be in the IDOT right away as well, but around the curve. I mean, uh, just to, you know, the curve, we are looking for maybe an extra lane, so there shouldn't be two lanes instead of that. There should be, like, because, you know, the cars who are parked, maybe they can park, but still we have our lane, so we can go towards south on the western. Well, the, the village engineer did design that realignment, looking at all the RDI on it. And one of the reasons it was looked at was to create that parcel of land next to North Avenue that the village owns. So if we start putting new lanes in, it's gonna reduce that piece, parcel of land.
I want to add, also, there is also a tree, you know, on the corner, I've been there many times. And we, that tree, it does not belong to village, you know? So we have to get maybe permission or?
I believe there's a wetland in, in that area too, and you would need special permits to be able to, I don't know, be going into that wetland.
Didn't IDOT, didn't IDOT make that all plantation or vegetation?
Correct, I think.
We went through this about five or six years ago. We tried to, I think we tried to put a light, and we couldn't get a street light there. Back then, I'm talking maybe five, six years ago.
I'm not sure. I was here then, and I, I've not, I was not aware of any lighting issue.
Because I know IDOT planted all that vegetation.
Right, trustee Siddiqui did, we went out there about the vegetation, and that's in the IDOT right away, and we have no authority to, we've cut back what we can, but there's an IDOT issue with the vegetation.
So when you're saying the no-parking, is it south, I'm sorry?
West.
Well, I'm looking at the houses that are here.
Mm-hmm, it's by the houses.
The vacant lot, so, so, um, oh, my direction's right, south of those houses? Or north where the vacant lot's at?
No, I mean, where the houses are, that's where.
Literally just by the, by the entrance. So when you enter Western Avenue from North Avenue.
Right.
It's right by there, especially the first few houses. And it's, it's, it's literally right by the curve, where people tend to park outside on the street.
Okay.
And they'll have to go because.
I, I, I see what you're talking, I see the cars actually on.
Mr. Flint, can you please schedule a trip to that area so we can go over there, Community Development? Ms. Joanne, Ms. Rachel, and I can go, you can go also, you know, so we can. That needs, you know, attention, you know? We don't want, that something happen, and then we say, okay, now we will do it. So please arrange that, and we will go, you know?
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you so much for your contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Youssef, for bringing your input, you know, to us, but we knew this thing before, you know? So we will do it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, man.
You're very welcome.
Anyone in the audience have a question? Yes, Ed?
I have a housekeeping question.
Come up, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Doug addressed it a little while ago about camera park usage agreement, and it says information to follow. But where should that be on the agenda? Because you can't comment on something after this, but you haven't talked about it yet. So we won't have, the public won't have any input on it. Should it be under the first discussion regarding, or?
Second.
The second?
Second.
So we won't, so, anything that comes up will be considered?
We'll have a second public discussion.
Okay.
Okay, can we continue? All right. This is the village, the zoning administrator, 25 East Fullerton Avenue. A recommendation to approve an application for variance to the sign ordinance of the village of Glendale Heights. Municipal code 11-6-11C1B, to allow an increase to the maximum sign area from 16 to 42.67 square feet. to allow a reduction to the minimum setback from 10 to 7 feet, 6 inches. to allow a changeable sign to encompass more than 50% of the sign area. Is there a motion to move this to the board with the recommendation? Yes, Pat?
Motion to move, move it to the board for recommendation.
Mohammed?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Marie?
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes, please.
All right, this will be moved to the board, all right? Next, a plan commission. It's a recommendation to re, to approve an application for conditional use to allow a restaurant establishment serving alcohol within a C3 general commercial district located at 365 East North Avenue, called Lucky's, at 365 Gaming Cafe. Does anybody, yes, Pat?
Motion to move it to the board for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All right.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
All right. Uh, next, we're gonna be discussing enterprise leasing. Doug, will you take that?
Uh, real quick, and then I'll like, I'll give it to Chief Pappas to take over. But we got notified two days ago that Ford opened up their police interceptor and F-150s for literally purchased in sometime in 2023. So we haven't yet made it to our vehicle replacement committee in order 2324 budget. But in order for us to get our vehicles in line to be produced sometime in 2023, we need to get orders in. So we have four vehicles, and Chief Pappas can tell you which ones, that are old in the police department fleet. They're 2017 vehicles that need to be up for replacement in that next fiscal year anyway. So, George?
Yeah, we have four squads that are 2017s. We're still waiting for the shipment for our current budget to come in. It's just a back order on any vehicles, it's the same thing. So Enterprise reached out to us, and they said, "In order to get in for fiscal year 2024, we need to put our orders in now. You have to have them within the next three weeks." So we have actually four squads that are 2017s that need replacement. So in order to get squads in sometime, you need to order them now. So Enterprise reached out to us, and they said, "In the next three weeks, please put the order in." So we have to meet with them, and that's what we're here for.
Very good. Okay, Pat?
Are, are we locked in on the price?
Yeah, so it's the, let's see what it is. I don't have the price in front of me, but it is, that's why you lock in now, and then you're good.
Okay, are these gas or electric?
Well, we're running, yeah, it's a mix of both.
We have hybrids now.
Yep.
So all the vehicles we have now, not, not all, the, the 10 new vehicles we purchased in the police department fleet are hybrids.
All right, because I'm not into electric.
No, no, and not for the police department.
They're, they're hybrids, yeah.
Not into electric.
I will tell you right now, though, uh,
Dead of electric?
I don't care, man.
The hybrid, the hybrid vehicles.
It's my opinion.
I, I don't disagree with you on most things, but hybrid vehicles in the police department fleet are saving us a tremendous amount of fuel right now, because all that idle time for the squad cars is on battery power. So at 450 a gallon, that idle time is actually saving us a lot of money right now.
All right, so once we're locked in, yeah, let's do it.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right.
I don't know who should I ask this question, you know, that car, Ford score, is those brakes are done or not?
The cars?
Yeah.
So they're, they're Ford Explorers?
Yeah, the.
Or F-150 trucks?
That big truck, you know, SUV, you know? I drove, I drove one day, you know?
He's talking about his vehicle.
Yeah, Paul.
The admin car.
Yeah.
I think he's talking about.
Yeah, we got that fixed already.
Oh, do that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, went in for service money.
But I don't want, we sell that, you know, before.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Thank you.
Mayor, are you still speaking? I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm done, done, thank you very much.
All right, number two is Glendale Heights Fest. This is why, Pat, we said we already had it on the agenda. Doug, it's yours.
So I just wanted to thank the residents and for a very successful event. I want to thank all the staff that dedicated all the time to the planning and organizing and fulfillment of all their duties. Chief Pappas and his staff put on a tremendous security plan. Uh, Chief Pappas and his staff put on a tremendous security uh plan that should be emulated by every other village around here as far as security plan goes. Uh, it was a very, it was probably the safest event uh that we've had in Summer Fest in many, many, many years. So uh kudos to Chief Pappas and his staff. Every other employee that worked there made the event uh very, very successful. Um, the residents felt safe. The residents had a, a wonderful time. Uh, we have some plans in the future for next year to make it safer and more efficient on the safety, to get more people in the lines quicker, uh, so that everybody can have enjoyment. Uh, we've already had one meeting on how to accomplish that. Uh, we'll have meetings in the future on how to make it a, a better, more efficient, safer event. But I just wanted to get it out there to the public and to the employees that uh everybody did a, a great, great job there, and the residents um enjoyed a four days, one day was rain, but four days of a, a wonderful fest. So I just wanted to get that out there and say thank you to everybody.
I can't say enough for Chief Pappas. I gotta tell you, the security there was excellent. I didn't hear anybody complain. They just loved it. You did an excellent job. Thank you so much.
It was a great job by the whole village, the village, the residents, and everybody involved.
Right, thank you. Uh, Pat?
Yeah, I was, I agree. That's what I was gonna say. But uh there's the fireworks. I think we could have did a lot better. I didn't uh, maybe next year we gotta find somebody else.
It's one of the things to talk about. It's one of the things that was up for discussion about um the expectation of what we expect in fireworks show.
Right. I mean, okay, I'll end it, I'll end it on that.
We did have better fireworks years ago, but you know what? The cost of the fireworks is astronomical, you know? Uh, unfortunately, you know, we had it all for one night. So you can imagine if we would have had to separate them and have them two nights.
No, you can have just one night.
Unreal. But they did a good job. They did the best they could, and that's all we can say about it.
I like their, with the residents, um, I feel like that they were disappointing in my, um, I love fireworks, a lot of them that.
Yes.
That Grand Finale was horrible.
I mean, I don't wanna say it just.
Well, say it. If you feel like that, say it. That's what you gotta do.
Thing was that bad, but.
Uh, yeah, not that bad.
Right, come on, we have to say something nice about it. Yeah, it wasn't that bad. Come on, they did the best they could. All right, now, Chief, this is you again. This is security for upcoming events. What could you tell us?
All right, there's uh three events scheduled for the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth at Camera Park. Can we have representatives here? Most of them are here. Some went outside. So the three events we have, or Keith has really met with the representatives from all three days. There's three different events. It's Monarch Butterfly. We have India Independence Day and Pakistani Independence Day. And when we met with them, we told them what the criterias are for safety and such, because, you know, like we did, we had a great Summer Fest. We had the Camera Park opening, we had uh national night out, and we had security. And the whole idea behind it is so people can go out from the community and have fun. So when we met with them, we told them what the stipulations are. They have safety plans that are due tomorrow, and they all know this. So they will get their safety plans in, and I think they're here to answer any questions that we might have. Some of the stipulations that we have are, include first aid stations. They have to have per one hundred people there, they have to have one security agent, somebody who's in uh can control this hundred people. And the security that they have there are going to be, I, I don't wanna go into much detail because it's a public event, but we have talked about uh security plans with them, and they are aware of what they need to have in order to make their event successful. And I believe they're gonna meet that.
So that, that goes with the leisure, the uh uh addendum that we tabled from New Business to here. And on the addendum, there's uh bullet points that they uh have to meet. There's a special event plan review. There's restrooms that we have to have in place for them. They have uh parking. Some are charging for, one, two are charging for parking, one isn't charging for parking. They have to have a cleanup. It's gotta be clean. Uh, if they don't clean it, we send them a bill. Uh, we're providing another dumpster for them. Uh, there's tents that they're, they're paying for to uh have uh booths in. Tables, chairs, light towers, stage, uh electricity hookups, food vendors, if they're having food and what the requirements are for food. Security, Chief Papas mentioned, uh, they need uh one security officer for every hundred people. So if they have two thousand people attending, they need to have twenty people identified as security. Uh, that means with security shirts on, some way that's identifiable for security. Uh, there's fencing. Uh, they have to have a first aid tent. Uh, it, maybe not if they have three hundred people there, but if they're having uh more than, I think it's a thousand, they have to have a first aid tent that's staffed by somebody trained in first aid the whole time that the event's open. Uh, so these are the requirements. Uh, they have a meeting on Monday with uh Leisure Service Director Keith Canouts, and they will be signing that agreement on Monday with Keith.
There's also incident action plan that's gonna have to be completed in conjunction with all three different events with the police department. After they uh fill out their portion of it, we'll meet and we'll make sure, reassure that it's getting done. If there's any uh VIPs that need special security, that's also something that needs to be addressed with the plans also.
Very good. Chester, what do you wanna say?
How will you know how many people are gonna be at, say, the, the bu- uh Butterfly Eve Festival? How we, how are we gonna know?
Well.
For security reasons.
We're holding them accountable for what they said in the paper, which was two thousand to twenty-five hundred. So uh that's been broadcast. That was in the paper, uh, in a Daily Herald, actually, cause I read it. And we're taking that number and saying, you need twenty.
Okay.
And the rest is what the event planners are telling us they expect in crowd size.
Okay.
Trustee Siddiqui, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I wanna go over the number um in this addendum which you mentioned. So two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollar for restrooms. It will be basically for three days, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then six hundred and twenty-five for dumpster and eleven hundred and thirty-five dollar. So if you add those, four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollar, that would be for three days.
Correct.
Okay, and how much money city is sponsoring them? How much money city is giving them for this event?
Forty-four seventy-five oh two.
Forty-four seventy-five, so it's free basically for them. I mean, they won't be.
No, they have many other costs.
Oh, no, I mean, yeah, whatever we are, basically, we are saying that two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollar, six hundred and twenty-five dollar, whatever, these are basically credited back.
Yes.
Okay. And how much money we have um on our budget for this kind of uh activity we put?
Uh, in one account, we have about eleven thousand dollars for um these events, and our special events account, there's about eight thousand.
Eight thousand. I mean, um, what I'm trying to understand is, I'm all for, for all those cultural events, but we have broken roads, we have broken streets, we don't have money. When my residents ask me, I say, I don't have money in the budget. But we have money to give it to this, because these are the commercial events as well. These people will make money by selling the spot to the food vendor to, it's not just a, or if anyone of the person can come in, if I'm wrong, yeah. Sure, sure, come, come to the food.
Uh, excuse, uh, Jaz, Jaz, please. Wait, wait. Can you, can you sit down, please, for a minute? We're, we're not done, we're not done.
Uh, let me answer, you know.
We're not, we're not.
Sir Siddiqui, trustee district two. I, in goodwill, I offer you to join. Is your country's Independence Day, is your nation's Independence Day? Why you are angry with these people, you know? Join us.
Here we go again. I don't wanna answer that because um I am not angry.
Mary.
I am the trustee here. I was elected by the, by people. It's not just like, you know, because if they are your friends, doesn't mean that I'm angry on them. And, and I know it's, first of all, it should be the, the residents here, we, we need to know why we are doing this, what kind of a benefit it's gonna bring to the city. Because I believe uh there would be uh like, you know, money which is gonna be made by, by this event. Am I wrong? Or, or because we are giving this money, but what we are getting on, on the, on the other side, wha- what we are getting here, why the city is sponsoring this?
Let me answer again, you know. Your relative, he used to have same fun, same event. Okay? Why your face is blank? Just let me, let me.
But did we?
All right, wait, all right, wait. Let's, let's keep this in a.
Please, just sit down, just sit down. You'll have your turn. Just sit down.
It's, my only question is, tomorrow, if someone is gonna come to my district that, hey, I want, did we put any RFP for this? How we selected this event people, like?
Well, they, they, they came to us. So if, if a, we have budgeted this money for years. For cultural events, for us to assist cultural events to come in and have a place to go, because we're a very culturally diverse community. And we've budgeted this money, same amount of money, for several years, for these cultural events. If nobody comes to us, we don't, we, we don't solicit it. If somebody, if somebody comes to us and, or doesn't come to us, the money doesn't get spent.
But did we tell that we have this money? Did we tell in our, uh, in our, the letter which we sent?
No, we, we don't advertise that we have this money, but.
People, how?
However, however, uh, Monarch Butterfly has been getting it for three or four years.
Oh, yeah, I mean, okay, that's fine.
You know, they talk amongst each other, and all that, all those numbers get talked amongst each other. And I have not been part of the conversations with any of them up until today, and Keith is on vacation today, so we can't answer the questions. But uh, you know, through that, you know, we've always participated in uh helping to assist in the funding of these cultural events. Or, you know, several of them wouldn't be able to go on if we didn't assist them financially in some, in a small way, actually. Uh, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to go on. Um, but we have, we have budgeted the same amount of money for uh, I went back to twenty nineteen, and I know if I go back twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, the same amount of money is gonna be in there.
Okay. Uh, is it like?
Excuse me. I think Pat wants to inject some thoughts in here.
I, I just wanna say that we've been doing this for at least twenty years. Pakistanis Day, Independence Day, Cricket Day, uh Filipino Day. We donate, we donated funds to keep these organizations going in town, in the village. These are our residents. If they wanna have a function in town, you know what? If we can help them out, why not, why not help them out? I don't care if you're, I don't, I don't care if you're Pakistani. I mean, you know, Mohammed's got some good things, but we were doing this for many years before the mayor got on the board, or Mohammed.
All I'm asking is.
Wait a minute, I'm not, I'm not done, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. If you, if the board wants to changes next year, everybody wants to make new rules and forget about what we've been doing for twenty, twenty years that I've been here, you gotta trust the out there that been here that was doing the same thing? If you guys wanna change the rules next year, you know what? Let's change the rules. Let's change it for everybody. But right now, let's, let's do what we have to do, and, and then next year, you wanna, you wanna change everything? Hey, I, I'll, I'll give you my vote right now. I'm not changing nothing. Everybody else wants to change your vote? Go right ahead.
My only.
I just wanna inject one thing. I don't think there should be any changes in anything unless the board votes on it. We are representing the people of Glendale Heights. If we're gonna change anything, we're responsible for these people. So we should be informed about anything that's going to be changed, and nothing should be changed without our approval.
Okay, let me, let me add something. All uh these people who are cheering, how many are the Glendale Heights resident? Can they tell me?
I am uh president of Glendale Heights, and I am resident. I love my.
You know what? It doesn't, it, okay, okay, you really wanna get into this. I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm up. My game.
It's.
Every, every function we have in town, if, uh, let's say, uh, Independence Day, uh, let's say Filipino night. I have, I have a lot of friends Filipinos. They have a hundred and fifty people at an event. There's that a hundred and fifty Filipinos in town, but, but there's at least maybe fifty, fifty that live in town. Summer Fest, we spent fifty thousand dollars to blow up smoke in the air, and nobody says nothing. Now we're gonna, now we're arguing for twenty-five hundred dollars? Come on, man, come on.
My only question is, Doug, next time make sure in our uh, the, the paper which we send, you know, because there is a lot of residents who want to do that if they know it's gonna be free for them. There is a lot, because we, we are hiding information. The main information is that, you know, we are, we have a money, twenty-five hundred for these cultural events, but why only some certain people who are not even the resident of the Glendale Heights? Where, who is the, I mean, the, our residence comes first, and I don't care if it's Filipino or if it's any other nationality. If they are willing to come and have there, then we, have you have to entertain, and not just the number of people because they are mayor's friend. That's my whole objection. I'm not against with any, against any uh.
All right, so let me, okay, let me, wait, wait. I'm on a roll. No, I'm on a roll.
I think we've, I think we're good.
Let's say, let's say I'm the mayor. I'm an Italian. I'm the mayor. I wanna have an Italian fest. The, there's only, uh, well, there's probably only about twenty-five Italians in town.
Any more.
Probably not anymore. But they come, they come from all over. They come from Elmwood Park. They come from uh Chicago. What, what, what does that, what does that mean?
Mr. Khan, wait a minute, please. She's cheering, so you got.
Cause Mike hasn't, Mike's had his hand up, and he hasn't had a chance.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Fell asleep, I mean, I'm saying.
Come on, Mike.
Um, I was gonna say, I have been to many of these events. I have enjoyed all these events, and I will always support these events. So I, my, I will not change a vote. I will always support them.
Yeah, escort, yes.
All right.
She's cheering, you know.
All right, is the board, can we have the people from the public speak now?
You are cheering, yes.
All right, okay. State your name and.
My name is Lubnay Jas, and I don't live in Glendale Heights, but I work at Chase Bank, and I take care of all the communities at Chase Bank. So when, when they come to me, in order for me to take care of them, they, they'd listen to me, and they say, you have an accent. Where are you from? I say, where are you from? They said, I'm Filipino. I said, then I'm from Philippine. When they say, I'm Mexican, then I said, I'm from Mexico. And when they say, I'm Pakistani, I said, I'm Pakistani. When they say, I'm Indian, I said, I'm Indian. I take care of all the communities in Chase Bank. So the reason we are here, we are not here to, I don't even know Coker Saab. I don't even live here. The reason I've been on my, working on my butt off to taking care of when Farah Barry and Suhil Barry used to do this event. We want, we would like one, you know, this event to be continuous in the Glendale Heights, because people love this event. All the communities, Indian, you know, all kinds of Pakistani, everyone look forward to this commu- this event. And so for last two years, when the COVID came through, we really miss it. So that's why we are here. We wanted to continues whatever the, our Independence Day, we used to celebrate with kids, you know, with family. We would like to continues to do that, even though if city doesn't help us, we will do it from our own pocket money. This is what I wanted to say, that we are here not for, you know, you're from Philippine, you're from Mexico, or you're from Pakistan. We are here as a family. We are working together. We are, you, you know, the unity. We are, that's how the America is all about. There is no religion. There's no, you know, you don't, you don't, you know, compare with people with their race, you know? You, if someone is dying, and you would like to give that person a life, you're not gonna ask, what religion are you from? My son is a. My son is a doctor. And I'm so proud of him, the reason he's a doctor, because his mother helps everyone. It doesn't matter which community you came from. So our religion being a human is first, then, then anything else comes. Thank you so much for, I appreciate it.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
All right, come on.
Thanks, Erwin. I'm Glendale Heights resident, fifty years. Are you living fifty years in Glendale Heights?
We need your name and address.
My name is Akbal Khan. I'm president of this board, this event, fourteenth August. And he say outside people. I am president of this organization.
You are the same person who came for the cricket ground as well?
Forget cricket ground.
Yeah, correct, is that, so I, I know who you are, and I'm not here.
And I, I'm in advisory board in DuPage County in Sheriff Department. I'm legal.
It's the.
You have the floor, he has the floor, let him speak, please. All right, go ahead, you have the floor.
Please, don't mess with this.
Oh, no, just talk, don't talk.
I'm requesting.
Mr. Khan, don't address to him, just talk.
All right, you have five minutes.
Oh, it's fine, fine. Outside people, we are not outside. We live fifty years here, nineteen seventy-two, my elder brother, my father. Become legal here, I am American, I am proud, this is my country. This is my city. That's it, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you, all right. You, all right, come on up.
Thank you.
Your name and address, please.
Onkar Singh Sanga, no, I don't live in Glendale Heights, I'm a Almus resident. And my friends, they live here, and my organization is Federation of Indian Associations, which has different association as an, we work as an umbrella. Uh, comments were made that we are making money. And I'm really sorry to say, we don't make any money, we are not for-profit organization. We spend money out of our pocket to help the community, make the events for them. If little bit help from the city, we, we are getting this time, I think it's appreciable that city helps for the cultural events. And we are celebrating India's National Independence Day. We are not having a commercial event, we are not making any money. My flyer says, it's a free event, free parking, everything is free. So we will be doing that, but we are not making any money. On the contrary, we put money out of our pockets to, for the community. Even though I'm not resident, a lot of my friends from our, my community or from Indian community. And I have a lot of friends from the Pakistani community. Yes, I know Mr. Koker for more than almost forty years now, okay? But he's not my friend, I just know him, because I know him through my father. So it's not right for someone to say that these are, these events shouldn't be happening. Because communities are made of different communities. Depending on, they can be different nationality, different ethnicity. They may not be citizens of the, uh, country yet, but still, they have ambitions, they have their back roots, connections, they wanna keep their culture alive. So if we are as a city, as elected officials, you need their votes. Why you go and ask them the vote if you don't wanna help them?
And can I?
I'm sorry, sir. Okay? If you're asking them to vote for you, why wouldn't you be supporting them? Doesn't matter their, whose friend they are. When they vote for you, they are not your friend, but still they vote for you. And everybody in the city, regardless they vote for you or they vote against you, they are part of the city, so they have equal rights to get the benefit out of the city. Thank you.
I just have a quick.
Thank you. When someone has the floor, Mohammed, we cannot interrupt them, okay?
No, I'm just have a.
But he's through now, okay, you're through, sir.
Uh, yeah, I'm through.
Thank you.
If he has a question, I can answer that.
Yes, actually, I have a quick question. Thanks for explaining, because that's where I was going. As you said that you are a nonprofit organization, and I have no concern about whether it's a Pakistani Day, Indian Day, or, the thing is, what I'm mentioning, I think you misunderstood me, that the way we are advertising this event. I mean, why only, even though you said that, you know, you, you know Mr. Koker, my question is, even though if someone knows Mr. Koker or not, he should be coming here if he wants to have a event, he can have that event because he should have that information. And that's what my direction to Doug is, that we have to tell our residents that we have eight thousand dollar budgeted for this events. And you, if you want, you can, because no, myself, I came to know just like an, a, a day before this day, I am a trustee here. I didn't even know that we have eight thousand dollar put aside for, for these kind of events. And my question is, I'm not saying, oh, you shouldn't have this, or you, you are providing parking free, but the other, and, and the, the first thing is, we are taking this as a one event. You have a separate event, the Pakistani Day is totally separate. They, they are, they are selling the sports, they are having a singer coming from Pakistan. It's a larger event, it's not the, that same.
His five minutes are up. Your five minutes are up.
Can I answer that?
No, no.
All right.
No, we gotta continue, there's another gentleman.
We have other people that wanna speak.
Okay, yes.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Cristobal Cabazo's, uh, Immigrant Society Page, and I'm from Wheaton, one oh four West Liberty Wheaton. I, I grew up in Glendale Heights, however, and I've been a long time resident here for the past town, twenty-eight years, thirty years I've been in my town. How can you talk about democracy if you have no culture? There, show me a, a city that has no budget for cultural events, and I will show you a city that has no soul, that's got the life sucked out of them. The Greeks knew the importance of culture, the Romans knew the importance of culture, the French know the importance of culture, Naperville, I, where, Wheaton, where I've lived, my adopted town, spends a, I don't even know how many tens of thousands in culture, I'm not comparing the two cities, but what I'm saying is, we started the Monarch Festival, is, uh, actually a conversation with Mr. Flint, with former Police Chief Flint, um, about leadership, about servant leadership, about civic engagement in our town, about that love, about how culture can take a group of strangers, yeah? And add that soul, you know, add that love, add that passion. And with Glendale Heights, a town that has so much diversity, you know? How can we, without cultural events, possibly speak of uniting this town, of having a unified vision, of having a unified goal in this town, of having pride? I grew up in Glendale Heights, I used to have fights in Glenbar West about, you know, Glendale Heights and our pride in this town with my, with my other classmates. Glendale Heights is in my blood, it's in my soul, and I loved that Mayor Jackson had the foresight, uh, to come to us, you know, and say, hey, let's do a festival. Hey, let's bring the Latino community to the table, let's bring our Pakistani brothers and sisters to the table, the Filipino community, I would love Mr. Martano an Italian fest, I'm actually an Italian teacher, so. But culture is really the vein of life of any town. If you rip that culture away, you're gonna rip that town's soul, and I love what Glendale Heights is coming to. I don't think culture needs to have a pretext or an excuse to have culture. Culture is a reason in itself, art is in a reason in itself, it needs no reason here. And, and I'm proud of all of the sentiment and all the positive vibes here, um, for us in the Latino community, that, that have given so much to Glendale Heights, that have so much pride in Glendale Heights. And I would say the first Monarch Fest that we aimed, that we shot, I had friends of mine that were crying, you know, they had never seen such culture in this town, or such relevant culture, which only goes to make the town more relevant. I say, so viva la cultura in Glendale Heights, you know, live there, my, my Pakistani brothers and sisters, my Indian brothers and sisters, the, the Sikh community here, um, it's been really fun knowing them and, and, and planning this fest here, and I really feel it's gonna be a wonderful time. And I really invite all of you guys to be here. We were asked if we were gonna have any VIPs, and I said, you know, the VIPs are gonna be the board, uh, Chief Poppis, you know, a, a former Police Chief Flint, and Mayor Childress. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, hi.
Chris, one question, Mr. Chris. Uh, one question.
Let someone who hasn't spoken speak.
For how long you know me, you know?
Oh, I don't know, it seems like yesterday.
About eighteen, uh, eighteen, nineteen year, right?
Yeah, I, no, no, I, I don't.
Thank you.
No, I've known you for a while, and I, I've known actually, uh, Mayor Childress before he was the mayor. Um, we've been in Immigrant Society Page, uh, our nonprofit, we formed in Glendale Heights in the year two thousand and seven, and we've had the honor of, of, you know, meeting a lot of the people here, you know, meeting Mayor, uh, Mayor Childress before he was the mayor, and, um, you know, just being able to do these cultural events for that community, uh, trying to have that love and action, so.
Mr. Cabazo, uh, you're the son of Dr. Cabazo, correct?
Uh, actually, no, you would think I'm his son, but actually, that, that is my brother.
Oh, whatever, you're a relative. You know, uh, I've been to your Monarch Festivals all the time, I enjoy it. But this time I will not be here, I'll be out of town, that whole weekend, I'll be gone. But, uh, I wish you a lot of luck on your festival, your Monarch.
Thank you very much, you know, and I, I would really, I, I, I would really like everyone to come out there and, and say hi, you know? I feel like a lot of times there's a disconnect with the Latino community. Um, and Immigrant Society Page has tried to bridge that, you know? We wanna have more participation, our real goal is the same goal of this board. We want everyone out there, um, a full participation in politics, you know, having these rooms full. Um, and culture is a really good first step in getting people motivated and feeling their talent.
Gracias amigo.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, your five minutes are up, sir, thank you so much. All right, go right ahead.
My name is Ajaz Beg, and, uh, Glendale Heights is my second home. I've been playing cricket in the Camera Park for last twenty years. And I have supported Suhil Bari and Farah Bari when they were organizing the, uh, uh, Independence Day. So not sure why you're acting so novice and so, let me talk, let me talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're, 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 you're sitting like a pretender there, okay? You're just against because they are not doing it. And, and last twenty years, did you ever ask these, I don't know how long you've been trustee, but, but the do, what, what you're doing, sitting at the desk, you're insulting all of us here, okay? For our country, okay, for our Independence Day, you are from Pakistan, you born over there, and now you're acting like, you know, yeah, shame, exactly, shame on you, okay? You should, you were, did you ever complain when Suil, Suil Bari was getting this four thousand dollar from the city?
I have to answer this.
Answer this?
Yeah.
When they were supporting Mayor, uh, the previous mayor, I supported Mayor Linda Jackson for twenty years. Mike Maron was my neighbor when he was the police chief. I have a very close, I come to MSI for, uh, for last fifteen, twenty years for, for prayer. So just relax, I'm telling you that, I'm just advising you, please relax. And now Akbal is the lead, and he is doing it, and I'm going to fully support. I live in West Chicago, not far, fifteen minutes from here. So we are supporting him, yeah, we are not Glendale Heights residents. And I came to know Mr. Koker when he became mayor, I did, I have no relationship, I did not know him. But now he is a mayor, and, uh, he's allowing us to, you know, uh, organize this, uh, Independence Day. We're going to do it, and thank you, Doug, and everyone else who's, uh, you know, helping us out. Thank you, Chief as well.
All right, we're gonna go to the next subject, because we're not getting anywhere with this, all right?
So we're gonna go. There isn't one. Is there, Mary, I would ask that if anybody else in the public has anything else to add?
All right, Ed wants to talk.
First, I'd like to welcome Pat back, cause I haven't seen you like that for a while, buddy.
I know, I guess, I haven't got this crazy in a long time.
He's taking after me.
No comment. You know, I mean, I had a whole bunch of stuff, but these guys all covered most of what I wanna talk about. But the thing is, hopefully I'm right, I think you got, you folks, I think are misunderstood. I, I get where Mohammed's coming from in the fact that, as an elected official, he is supposed to safeguard our money. And before Doug, Doug explained that this was a budgeted item, it did seem like, where did this money come from? But now we know it's a budgeted item, it's been a budgeted item for twenty years. But it is all your responsibility to look after our money so that we know where it's going. These are great events, I'm looking forward to all, all of them. I've known Chris for over twenty years, uh, so, you know, I, Mr. Khan is taking over this year. There were some problems last year too, and they were money problems. So I, I, I hope I'm correct in saying that, you know, I, I, I don't think that, uh, Siddiqui is getting a fair shake here because I, it, I don't really think it's about the Suhil Berry issue, at least I hope it's not. I think it's, hopefully, it's that you're just overseeing our money as residents. And that, that's my point, is that, I hope that's the truth, because all that cricket stuff should be way behind us. It should just be about you protecting our residential, our money, and I'm hoping that's what you're trying to do.
Exactly, and that's what my concern was, that if there is a money involved, if we budgeted this money, then it should, we should advertise that, correct? I mean, we should let everyone knows, every resident of Glendale Heights, that we have this money, come on in.
But like Doug said, they can, I mean, I, I, Doug, you did a great job, because before, you knew I wanted to talk, and that was wise, you know, how can you just give this money out?
And my only thing is, because I get a lot of complaints about, about the roads. And hey, why, my, you know, road is not made up, my simple answer was, oh, we don't have a budget. But now I know that, you know, we, so the people who are watching this, at least they know now that we have eight or nine thousand dollar next year available, you know, for, for these events. And if they wanna do their, they, it's not gonna be just someone doesn't know, or they approach us, everyone can approach us.
But if, but if Mr. Khan and Chris were smart, not smart, it sounds horrible for the third person, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't write your name down, but if they were ahead of the curve and did ask for the money, good for them. And if someone previously or in the future doesn't, that's on them, it's, you know, it's not the village to say, hey, come take our money, um, but they shouldn't be penalized for being smart enough to do it.
No, no, I'm, I'm not against the Pak, the, I think you are absolutely right that they misunderstood. My only question is, we have, if we have money, we should advertise it, and we should let the resident know that we have this money for these kinds of events. And I am up for, for these events.
But it sounds like Doug did do that, I mean.
Doug, I mean, it, we, we sent our newsletter every month, correct? We can have.
Well, you can't advertise every dollar that's available.
No, it's not unlimited, I mean, the eight thousand or nine thousand, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's, and it's, you know.
We can let the resident know that, oh, we, for the cultural events, if you, if you have something, you know, we have this money for you. And it, it's fair with the resident.
But that's if they come to you and ask for it, I mean, I, you don't need to, why would a resident care about dollars that are not available if it's not a culture event? I just think that these three have this great events all coming up.
So just for.
A little, a little bonus to help them, so that we can.
And the reason we have this, right, isn't specifically for these events, we have this for any event.
And exactly, that's what I'm saying.
But historically, we've had these events over the last many, many years, and we know what that costs, right? For instance, uh, after George Floyd, we had groups come to us and wanna do a Juneteenth event. They wanna come to Camera Park, one, because Village of Glendale Heights is actually very receptive to these types of events. And we have a very central location within the municipal area of DuPage County, central DuPage County, that's very centrally located, and we have Camera Park, which is a great park to host events at. And organizers from Glenbar North and Glenbar West came to us to do a Juneteenth event. We went, of course we would do a Juneteenth event, why wouldn't we do a Juneteenth? And i- in a matter of a week, we organized it with them, we helped them plan it, we donated stage, we donated, uh, some, some, uh, payroll and people to help them with it, because it was high school kids that were organizing, they didn't have anything. So we have these monies out there for these civic, cultural events to help, uh, them achieve what they wanna achieve and getting their message out to what they wanna do. That group was a one-night event, it was three hours, it's not a three-day event, there wasn't that much involved in it. But there was a donation on part of the village with some police personnel, with, uh, stage, we brought out risers from the golf course, so there was a contribution from us, not necessarily monetarily, but in other ways. So, you know, we have these monies budgeted for these types of events that happened kinda spontaneously, because George Floyd, the Juneteenth event wasn't a thing. This is planned, um, last year only, or last couple of years, there was only two of the three days, not three, right? So not every year is the same, not every, every, uh, everything goes off the same. But the money's there because cultural events do come up and we are a centrally located, uh, community, with, it's a very diverse community and people wanna come here.
Uh, excuse me, Mary, can we put this, uh, can we put this to rest? Can we put this to rest?
There's anybody else?
We're gonna go into another subject, all right, let's.
No, we have enough already.
All right, I mean, there's nothing weak. All right, I mean, there's nothing we-
I think he doesn't know English. I already told, explain myself, what we, whatever.
You're out of order.
All right.
I, 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 okay.
All right, let's continue on with this meeting, okay?
Okay, ma'am, I want to add something, you know.
I'm sorry.
I want to add, you know, to trustee Siddiqui's reaction, you know, action, whatever. Trustee Siddiqui, you have taken oath under US and LNA Constitution. All the time you are protecting your resident. Who came, because you married with your wife, she brought you from Canada to US, number one.
Don't go where I come from.
On that behalf, you became trustee.
Just hold on, hold on. Just hold on, you know, just hold on, this, number two, whatever you say. Just stop your garbage mouth that, talking about-
He has a little shame.
No shame, you should be ashamed.
He's our Pakistani people.
We have to stop.
We're gonna adjourn, Mayor, we're gonna adjourn.
All right, that's enough, now.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait.
So second? I make a motion to adjourn.
We are, because that's why you have a lawsuit. Mayor, we are adjourning back to the board meeting so we can go to executive session.
All right.
If you bring my family, I will-
It's not your family, Mohammed.
Second. You need a second to that motion.
Second.
I thought you were moving.
I did, I seconded it too, I don't care, let's move this thing on.
Are we going to-
I'm back to my old self again.
The motion to, uh-
Executive session. We're going to executive session.
Motion to adjourn the COW first.
I thought I'd calm down, but I guess not.
We're going back to the meeting so we could adjourn to go to executive session.
You have a motion to adjourn the COW meeting, it's been moved and seconded.
Who seconded?
Need to vote on that motion.
Okay.
Who seconded?
I did. Okay. Mike White. Mike White. I made the motion.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Now you should entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, which means you will not be coming back to the regular board meeting. Motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss pending litigation under 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C11. Somebody want to move that?
Some moved.
Second.
And roll call vote.
And I want to announce, announce number one.
Is there a motion, I mean, someone stop this guy, or what?
Excuse me, I have to take the record.
I want to make-
Would everybody please calm down?
I'm going to file counterclaim, and whatever money I will receive, that will go for my resident of Glendale Heights, whatever.
All right.
So there's a motion, Mayor, and a second.
I seconded.
It's just-
Chester?
Yes.
Can I get to the right, the ones here? Okay, Chester seconded.
Right.
First time I lost my cool in a long time.
Take after me, I like that.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
You have to announce the motion passes and the meeting's adjourned, Mayor.
Uh, meeting is adjourned for executive session.